Hi, I'd like to call the meeting of the Willett City Council for January 9th, 2019, to order. And, I'll pledge to the flag. I'll start.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vocal?
Councilmembers Connie, Patty, Connie.
Kristin.
President.
Strong.
Here.
Janski.
Yes.
Martin Paul.
Here. You know, at this moment, at this point, I'd like to take a moment of silence. A long-time friend of the city of Willett's, Jim Earl, passed away. And he ran the Willett's Community Services, the food bank over there, and so I'd like to take a moment to remember him.
Public communication, the council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person, so that any one may be given an opportunity to be heard. To expedite matters and avoid repetition, whenever any group or persons wishes to address the council on the same subject, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen for the group. The item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the council, commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. No action shall be taken. Is there anybody from the public, or anybody like to speak? Okay, going, going, going. Public matters, I don't see we have any. No ordinances, so we're on to item five, the consent agenda. Do we have, anybody interested to pull anything?
I'll move approval of consent calendar.
I'll second the motion.
Oh, it's been a second?
Either one.
Any further discussion? Anybody from the public? All right, call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Janski?
Yes.
Marigan Paul?
Yes. All right. Information reports, they're in our packet, and I guess they're available out there. Right to appeal, persons who are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council may have the right to a review of that decision by the court. The city has adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. Item eight, commissions, agencies, and authorities. The Willett City Council meets concurrently as the planning commission and sitting, as the successor agency, we have a resolution to approve recognized obligation payment schedule, 2019 through 20, and administrative budget for July 2019 through June 2020.
June?
Oops. Good evening. My name is Yaya Niall, and I'm a consultant with RSG Inc. We've been consultant to the Willett Successor Agency for many years, and we wanted to present the ROPS, which is the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, for fiscal year 1920, as well as the administrative budget. And I wanted to also provide a brief overview of the process, as June mentioned to us that there were a couple of new council members, and we wanted just to do a quick review of how this process works. So redevelopment, there was a former Willett redevelopment agency. Assembly Bill 1X26 dissolved all California redevelopment agencies in 2012, as a result of a budget crisis at the state level. The dissolution law created successor agencies to wind down the former activities of redevelopment agencies. Redevelopment agencies, they're required to carry out and pay out enforceable obligations that existed prior to 2012. So many, all redevelopment agencies had debt, they had agreements in place, there were payments that still needed to be made, and all of those things still needed to be paid somehow. So funding for these enforceable obligations are requested through a process that DOF, the Department of Finance, calls the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, the ROPS, and that is what is before you tonight. So before we start talking about the ROPS, what are enforceable obligations? So enforceable obligations were basically contractual agreements that were in place prior to dissolution in 2012. Those might include bonds, loans, agreements with property owners, amounts owed to other funds of the city, contracts entered into with other agencies after dissolution to operate the successor agency, administrative costs of the successor agency, property disposition costs, et cetera. Those are all reviewed and approved by the Department of Finance, and the way that is done is it's put on the ROPS form, and there's a review process the Department of Finance goes through, and they can deny an item and say that they don't agree that it's an enforceable obligation. Oftentimes, they want to see the actual contract, or loan agreement, or documents proving that it was, in fact, a true enforceable obligation. So the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, the ROPS form, was a form that was created by the Department of Finance. It has to be approved by a now countywide oversight board, and submitted to the Department of Finance every year by February 1st. Each successor agency is basically requesting the revenue that they anticipate needing for the following fiscal year. So we are looking at fiscal year 1920. So the ROPS covers, this will cover July 1st, 2019, to July 30th, 2020. The fiscal year, they split into what they call an A period and a B period, basically your July through December, and then your January through June. It is now one ROPS. In the beginning, several years ago, we used to have to do this twice a year. There used to be a ROPS A and a ROPS B, and in 1617, I believe it was, they consolidated into one form, but on the form, you'll see that it's still requested by A period and B period, and the money is still distributed by the county, A period and B period. The distributed funds are called Redevelopment Property Tax Trust Fund, or PTTF for short, and they're distributed every year, June 1st and January 2nd. Now, because the ROPS is looking forward to the next fiscal year, it's pretty much an estimate of the funds that the successor agency anticipates needing for that fiscal year. As such, the Department of Finance also requires a review, once the fiscal year has passed, to see how much was actually spent versus how much was requested, because anything that was unspent, unfortunately, does not become your money. It needs to be spent for future purposes. So what they have, what they have come up with is what they call a prior period adjustment. That used to be part of the ROPS process, it used to be one of the tabs on the ROPS form, but this last year, in 2018, we reviewed fiscal year 1617, and that was due to the county on October 1st. So we, on behalf of the Willett Successor Agency, submitted a PPA form for fiscal year 1617, that reviewed the amounts that were received by the successor agency in the 1617 year, and also compared that to what the actual expenditures were in the 1617 year, and that gets reported. So the county auditor controller now has the PPA form, and they have until February 1st to review the items, and submit their review of the PPA to the Department of Finance, concurrently when the successor agency has to submit the ROPS February 1st. So the PPA in 1617 showed that there was 24,234 of unspent funds. The majority of it was administrative cost allowance. The successor agency had requested 80,000 of administrative funds in that fiscal year, and 55,880 was spent. And so that leaves 24,120 of administrative cost allowance that was unexpended that fiscal year. And there was also a slight $114 adjustment in interest for the bonds, which is common to see some minor adjustments. So those were the amounts that were reported to the county auditor controller. A lot of times, depending on the county, they request backup information, they want to see the financial reports, the expenditure reports, trial balances, et cetera, to verify that. At this point, we haven't heard anything from the county auditor controller in regards to the PPA form that has been submitted. So that's not to say that we won't before February 1st, but at this point, we have not received any requests for additional information. So the ROPS 1920 detail tab is basically the tab in the spreadsheet that requests the funds for the next fiscal year. So the ROPS 1920 for Willett's requests a debt service payment on the 2002 tax allocation bond, an administrative cost allowance, bond trustee fees, and a bond debt service payment reserve. The reason that there is a reserve requested on the Willett's ROPS every year is because, as I mentioned, the funds are distributed by periods. There's an A period and a B period. The A period, property taxes are much lower than in the B period, and so there is not enough money in the A period to fund the bond debt service payment that is due in the A period. And so what has worked out well, and what we've done on this, is we basically request the next bond payment in the B period. So the 340,338 is requested early, we're requesting it on ROPS 1920, but that payment is actually for the September 1st, 2020, bond debt service payment. But because there's not funds in ROPS 20A period to receive that money, we have to request it now, so that the bond payment won't be late. And so the debt service payment on the 2002 that is due this September, September 1st, 2019, we already requested the majority of that, the 362,778, that was requested last ROPS period, and we show that on the ROPS form as a reserve balance. And then in the B period, there's just an interest payment that's due on March 1st, and so that's requested from the B period as well. So it's a little confusing, but it has worked out well to get the reserve, the ROPS period ahead.
They don't pocket the reserve?
Right, they don't, because they understand that sometimes the obligations are more than what is available, and so when it's very clear and straightforward, that it's worked out well for that. There's also a cash balances tab as part of the ROPS middle, and on that tab, the successor agency has to report all cash on hand that could fund enforceable obligations. So the ROPS 1920 cash balances tab is looking at fiscal year 1617, and so the next ROPS 2021 will look at 1718, et cetera. So it's a couple periods behind, because it wants to make sure that the expenditures have been completed, and the books have been done, so we can report.
And that's by design, not because we're late?
Right, right. That is, yes, yeah. The ROPS form that DOF sends to the agencies is something that they create that agencies cannot change. There's very little that we can actually complete and change on the form that DOF provides to us. And so what happens on the cash balances tab is the successor agency has to report all cash on hand, and so many successor agencies earn interest, or maybe they have property, or they have income coming in, and so that gets reported, and that basically lowers the amount that the Department of Finance will approve to be sent to you. So for example, if the successor agency asks for 500,000, but they show that they have $50,000 of cash on, in cash balances, the successor agency will only receive 450, because they're saying you have 50,000 that you have retained, and they want you to apply those funds towards the obligations. So the Willett's cash balance reports 3,700, and that is from interest in fiscal year 1617, and that will likely be deducted from one of the obligations that is being requested. Now, another part of the process is an administrative budget is required to be approved by the county oversight board, and it basically just outlines the administrative needs of the successor agency for the fiscal year. So the successor agency, we worked closely with your finance department, and despite the fact that in 1617, the administrative costs were lower, June has a, she says she has, she's already been working on the budget for the 1920, and she believes that 80,000 is going to be a very accurate reflection of the successor agency needs for 1920. So that is in the administrative budget.
Was it lower because we didn't capture enough of our expenses, or lower just because cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, my understanding is because we had sort of changes in our staff regarding, in our finance staff, in a very short-staffed situation, I don't think we captured all of our actual expenses, and we also could have done a little bit more, frankly, in our financial accounting, and we would like to, you know, maximize our potential in terms of our accounting.
And that doesn't raise any flags with them?
No, because 80,000 has pretty much been what the Willett Successor Agency has requested for many, many years, and it's never been called into question by the Department of Finance. There's many agencies that request higher amounts, and Department of Finance in their determination letters will sometimes make a comment about how they feel like it's more than what they need. They can't really lower it at this point, but the county oversight board can. And so, you know, we try to be true to what we anticipate the actual costs to be, so...
Yeah, I think the 24,000 was probably an anomaly, just because of the changes in staff?
Yeah.
And people didn't know to sort of like, oh no, you need to account for this, this, and that.
Right, correct.
And we want to make sure that we're fully funded.
Right, right. And as I said, June says she's already been working on the 1920 staffing costs, and she, you know, has pretty good numbers, and she believes that the 80,000 is going to be what the successor agency is going to need for 1920. The final item we wanted to talk about is, there is something called a last and final ROPS. So, beginning in 2016, successor agencies were allowed to submit what the Department of Finance calls a last and final ROPS, if certain conditions are met. Once they approve a last and final ROPS, it can only be changed two times. And the last and final ROPS basically covers the successor agency obligations through the end of the final obligation. So for example, if your bond goes through 2030, the last and final ROPS would cover your obligations all the way through 2030. Most agencies are not going through the last and final ROPS yet. There are some special circumstances where some cities could not, or some successor, cities could not receive a loan paid back by the successor agency unless they went through a last and final ROPS process, so there are some jurisdictions who have done it. The big consideration is that when a last and final ROPS is submitted, it's basically the agency kind of signaling, you know, we're pretty much done, and the administrative cost allowance is significantly reduced. So it's usually reduced to, you know, a thousand or two per line item, so in a, you know, in a place like Willett's, it would probably be reduced from 80,000 down to 5,000. So it's a pretty significant reduction, which is why many jurisdictions have not filed a last and final ROPS unless they have had another reason that has really compelled them to do so. But we wanted to make sure that, you know, that is something that is out there, and with the new countywide oversight boards, you know, this is the first year that the oversight board has been countywide. Up until this point, each jurisdiction has had their own oversight board, and so everybody's not quite sure what the county oversight boards are going to do in terms of administrative budgets, and last and final ROPS, and ROPS items. And so we wanted to make sure that you were aware that there is this potential out there. So...
Is there a positive reason to do a last and final, I know there's a disadvantage?
Right.
Yeah, but what...
Well, there are, like, so for instance, I did work on one for the city of Orville. They had a city loan that they could not repay except for under a last and final ROPS, and it was a, it was like a $3 million loan that the city really needed repaid, and the only way they were going to get it back was if they did a last and final ROPS. And so they did go forward with a last and final ROPS. They also, their staff, who was kind of doing all, he was retiring, and so they really weren't going to have a staff person to carry on a lot of these successor agency items. And so for them, it was, it was worth it to them to have the city be repaid their loan back, and because of their loss of staff, you know, they were kind of like, well, we really don't have anyone to carry on anyway. And so they, we did prepare one for them, and there is, you know, there's a little bit of back and forth with DOF on that. You know, we had initially requested a higher administrative allowance, DOF cut it, they cut it back down to, I believe, 5,000 is what they're receiving each year, and that's basically for their staff to cut the checks to the obligations that are still owed. So because of that, like I said, we, most jurisdictions are not going that route, unless there's a compelling reason to. So the timeline for this process is the Mendocino County Oversight Board is meeting on January 24th. In Mendocino County, the city of Ukiah is going to be administering, is administering the oversight board. The oversight board members are, it's mandated by law who sits on this board, and once that is approved by the oversight board, February 1st is the deadline, to submit the oversight board resolution and the ROPS to the Department of Finance. They have a 45-day review period, during which time, they often ask for supporting documentation for the items, and then they issue a determination letter, which basically says, we approve, or we approve these items, but we don't approve this item, we approve this item, but because you have 3,000 in cash balance, you know, we're going to give you this much from here, and you're going to take your 3,000 from there. So they have until March 18th to submit their letter to the successor agency. If the successor agency does not agree with any of the points that the Department of Finance has made, there is a process called a meet and confer, where the agency fills out a Department of Finance form, kind of outlining the issue that the successor agency does not agree with, and justification, et cetera. And oftentimes, that's handled through a phone call with the Department of Finance, or sometimes a meeting if it's a more critical issue. The items on the Willett's ROPS are pretty straightforward, and there hasn't really been an issue in the past, so we don't anticipate that that's going to be an issue at this point. And then once that is approved, the ROPS A distribution will be June 1st, and the ROPS B distribution will be on January 2nd. And so this concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kind of one for Stephanie. So we hired your firm because you're the subject matter expert on how to walk us through this?
Correct.
Would, this something that we would be using them again every year because it's a complicated thing?
Yes.
And that's part of the 80,000 that we're...
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it comes out of the successor agency admin budget, yes.
Oh, okay.
Because it's a very different type of finance function than a municipal finance.
So you, you give June the homework assignment, she prepares all those numbers for you, and then you...
Right, she, yeah, she basically provides us with the financial reports and documents that we need, and we work in conjunction on the admin budget, and, yeah.
And then do you represent us at the county level, or does the document stand on its own?
Yes, we will, especially because this is the first time it's going to be a county oversight board, so we anticipate going. Now, we have heard in some counties that they're putting all the items on consent. We're not quite sure how that's going to work, but I haven't heard that from Mendocino County, but we have heard that for other counties. Mendocino County only has three successor agencies, so it's just Willett's, Fort Bragg, and Ukiah. So they may want to hear every item, we're not quite sure how it'll go.
Does the county get to take a cut out of everybody's...
They, well, through the pass-through, they get a pass-through payment before it even comes to the successor agency. So what used to be the tax increment funds, there is a pass-through amount that goes to the county for administration, and then there's other, you know, other, other taxing entities get percentages and et cetera, and then the amount that's left is what's available to help fund the enforceable obligations.
And when we finally get our money, does it come through the Department of Finance directly to us, or does it come through the county?
It comes through the county.
Okay.
Yes, yes. And there is also a small amount, because the city is also a taxing entity, any residual amount that is not spent on these obligations does get distributed to all the taxing entities. So as, as the city, there is also a small amount that the city receives that is not, does not have to go towards successor agency activities, that goes to the city general fund, and can be used for whatever the city. So I've been working with June to kind of trace how much the city has been getting, and it's not a huge amount, but in, you know, some cities, it can be a big amount. Here, it's, you know, it's kind of varied. We're still trying to work with the county to get some of the reports, going back to see what the amounts were, and she's trying to track down where that money has gone. Because some, some jurisdictions receive the money, and they're not quite sure what it is, and so they stick it back in their successor agency fund, which you don't want to do, because then DOF will give you less money, and, because that's the city's money. So that's just something else to be aware of.
And this is what used to be called part of the waterfall, our...
Right.
The taxing entity money that would go to the city, the last piece of it, is our waterfall money, and that's our, you know, general fund, good stuff. And I just want to make sure that that, I had been asking about that, so...
Yes.
I'm very glad to know that you're on top of it.
Yes, yeah, we've been, we've been communicating about it, so we're trying to kind of trace the amounts that have been, that should have gone to the city, and she's trying to trace where that money has gone.
Yeah, there was a, I believe there was a housing agency, the Housing Authority, not the Housing Authority, but there was a housing agency from the county that had been, was the recipient of some of that money in the past, and so I want to make sure that our city captures it.
Right, right. The city should have their own amount.
Yes.
No matter how small it is, the city should still be receiving something.
Okay. Any other questions up here?
I was going to ask, are you ready for a motion or not?
No, I want to go up to the public first.
Okay.
See if anybody in the public has any questions. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the ROPS 1920 as a first...
And corresponding resolution?
And the corresponding resolution, yes.
I'll second her motion.
All right. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Strong? Yes.
Marigan Paul?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Be careful heading home.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Stuff isn't up to...
I figured once we handed it to the county, we were done, but apparently not.
No, we're supposed to get some. I was looking for that money.
So I guess we are now on city manager reports and recommendations.
First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody back to 2019. It's really nice to be our first, have our first meeting of 2019, and so, welcome. Few items of business before I jump into our city goals, which is really what I'm going to talk about mostly. I have some good news to share, and I'm not going to steal Dusty's thunder completely, but I did want to sort of let you all know some incredibly good news, that I just, I just, it's going to be on our goals anyway, so I want to let you know. Over the holiday break, we received notice that our Rails to Trails grant that we put in, that we've put in three years in a row, but this time, we sort of felt that the stars had aligned, and sure enough, it looks like we have an incredibly good shot at actually getting our almost $7 million grant to do Rails to Trails. This is, I can't even tell you how excited I am about this. Our staff was able to do this with no consultant help, and I've never heard of that. I mean, normally, when you have a grant of this size and this complexity, you hire a firm, and you pay them lots and lots of thousands of dollars to put something together, but our staff did it themselves, and I, which is just, so... And they, and they received a score of 87, which is phenomenal. The staff has recommended we receive this grant, it scored... It scored extremely high. It was the only grant granted in Mendocino County uh throughout the state, which is phenomenal again. Um, all the details Dusty's going to tell you more about in his report, but I Dusty I needed to leave it that because I'm just bursting with pride and excitement over us being able to do this. And to be able to be city manager while this is happening, I mean, they've been doing this without me for a long time and I just happened to be sitting here when we got it, so I'm so lucky.
How sure is it that we would get?
Um, pretty darn sure. It's it's we've never heard of them not taking the staff recommendation, nothing would. Um, but it's, you know, we haven't actually been granted the money yet, but it looks pretty darn sure that we're going to have. Um, and that and what that means is actually a seven million dollar project. Um, this these are local dollars to be able to build and design this. We're going to keep it in the city as much as possible. It will be a boon to the economy. It will be a boon to um the aesthetics of our city, um, creating this wonderful safe space to walk and ride our bikes and all do all those good things. So I wanted to leave it at that.
Wow.
For anything else. Um, another thing that fun thing that came along is the chamber notified me that they got an email from uh the folks over at American Pickers. And um if you they they're coming to California in March and they'd like to come to Willets. So do you know somebody with a garage full of stuff or private collection that they would like to share with the folks over at American Pickers? You should go ahead and give them a call or their email. And if you want that, you can contact me. Their their phone number is pretty easy. It's one eight five five old rust. So give them a call if you know somebody that has a collection. Um, with that, I wanted to roll into uh taking a look at our city goals. In in May of last year, um, we did a goal setting session and that goal setting session was the first. This is something that I read in our rules and procedures for the council. This is something we do actually every two years. And uh so we 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 didn't have any that were on the books, but we created a whole bunch of great goals. And I kind of wanted to give a a little bit of an overview of our our how well we've done so far and on those goals. And I'm not going to read all of them because there's quite a few, but I wanted to sort of pick some out, um, kind of tell the public what we're doing. We're going to go back to you in May to do a review of those goals to see what else, you know, we can put in there and it it's a review, but this is just a a sort of a quarterly check in. All right, check in because we haven't done it quarterly yet. Um, and I'm just going to pick out a few things and and just ask for if you guys have any questions, if anyone in the public has any questions, this is a good time to do that. We had ADA compliance issues. We did quite a bit of work this year and because not because of not only because of lawsuits, because we did want to improve accessibility in the community. Um, we have a new ADA bathroom in City Hall. It's complete. It's very wonderful. It's right down the hallway if you want to take a look at it. Um, we are redoing our doors to make them much easier to get through because right now we have very heavy wooden doors. Um, that work is going to commence probably this month, actually February, I believe. They were waiting on parts for that. Um, the Art Center is having an ADA van accessible space. Um, that's going to be um it has been designed, the bid has been awarded and construction will start soon on that. So the Art Center will have a an ADA accessible space behind it. And then um the Maple Street Improvement Plan stated for construction next spring will include two ADA ramps, uh, the West Mendocino Street intersection and approximately a hundred feet of ADA compliant sidewalk. Um, some of the other things I wanted to uh point out is we wanted to do our housing element. We did it. That's great. Uh, the flip side of that is we have to do it again this year and yet that is going to come for in front of you very shortly for a contract to do that. Um, the good news is once we do the second housing element, we won't have to do it again for, I think, eight years. So that's nice. Um, our watershed maintenance and reseeding project went swimmingly. It we had many loads of timber go out. Reseeding grants were we were awarded grants for reseeding. That reseeding will commence in spring. Um, we do have one more load of trees that will likely be cut depending on the market, but those are not critical for fire safety. Uh, one uh another aspect to this that we discussed um at one of our last meetings was the next part for fire safety is uh the county is looking at a grant to do a shaded fire break in the watershed. And if we get that grant, we'll be coming back to you to discuss that project in in more detail. Um, I have just been I guess Brook Trails is doing a shaded fire break as well at this at this time, and so that will um help our fire safety here. Um, on our airport, uh, airport management was transferred in-house. Uh, that has done that has been very successful. I've gotten a lot of positive um comments from the public on on how well our in-house staff is doing that. Thank you, Kathy and Bill. And uh now we're working on cutting trees. We got some trees cut the uh for for safety of the runway. Uh, the FAA has wanted us to or actually Caltrions has wanted us to cut trees um to make the approaches safer. We've done some of that. Uh, we've asked for grants to help us do some more of that. Uh, that is in progress. In terms of finance, we have uh some we have some a very short staff in finance, uh, so we had some compliance issues just in terms of um we had a little bit of a backlog in our accounting. Um, that backlog has almost been completed. We have a new accountant. Um, she is going to be up to date on our accounting as of the end of this month.
Can I stop you and ask?
Yes.
One now.
Please.
The updated flood zone maps were it said.
Yes.
They were just going to be completed in December. Did that happen?
It it actually we got a new date, January twenty fifth.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll come January twenty fifth. And that is something that our building official and co-compliance officer, Chris Morgan, is taking care of and he's anxiously awaiting those. But we do have a new date for those. And stop me at any time if you want to discuss this more because I'm I'm just going to run through a few things. We have um our cannabis excise tax uh was successful, uh, passed with more than seventy percent of the vote. Um, we have a new we have a tax consultant that is actually going to help us actually collect those taxes. Um, we're doing a contract right now with them. It's a very it's not very much money. Um, they're just actually helping us figure out how to actually just set the rates, which we will be coming back to, by the way, with that, um, likely in February. And that's going to have some market data on what people are charging in the area and how we can be competitive and what we want to set our rates at and then the actual mechanics of collecting the tax. Uh, we were the. Our website finally went live. We have a new website. We've been working really hard on it. Um, many staff members were involved in getting that together, but it looks a lot better and it's it's much more user friendly and so we're proud of that. Our landfill closure, that is actually another um exciting potential opportunity um in that we've been working on trying to close this landfill for for quite a bit. Um, we are uh one of the challenges is that we've been sort of taking the burden even though we half owned that with the county. Um, partially is because our accounting, we've been behind in our accounting. Now that we have a new accounting staff, she's going to be attacking that and we're going to be asking the county for a moment to take over their burden of this project. Um, and with that, with the landfill closure, uh, this is actually a pretty beautiful piece of land next to the adjacent to the Boy Scout camp and that could create some opportunities for us in terms of recreation. And um it's something that we can explore and and look at because a couple hundred acres of wildland around here is increasingly rare and it may be something we want to protect and and do something fun with in the terms of recreation. The uh, let's see, we've got we've we've repaired our wastewater weir. Not repaired it, actually instead of a weir, we now have a substitute uh technology that is up and running, so we're able to measure water. Um, and we know and we're going to be able to remove the weir, which will be good because fish can now swim in that stream and that'll be great. We have um, let's see, I know people have asked me quite a bit about the city's emergency plan update, including hazardous materials. And um this is Chief Warnock took the lead on that and what he worked with, he's working with a consultant at this time, um, with a grant from PGME. PGME gave us five thousand dollars, which actually paid for the consultant, to put together an emergency plan update. And he's working in the middle of that right now. And the city also received a sixteen thousand five hundred dollars through a competitive grant process for flood response plan. Um, Chief Wells, thank you very much, has offered to actually help us all of staff in getting refreshers on mandated employee emergency training. And we've all received emergency training. We sort of have to as city employees. Um, but he's going to give us an in-person, on-the-ground training in February that we're excited about and we're going to provide breakfast and he's going to tell us how to do things and make it uh uh it's it's a good refresher to do in springtime and or in February. Um, we're also going to be looking at doing some scenarios and um sort of after we have and uh that's sort of a trial run in case of an emergency to see how we we respond and how the emergency action plan works. And if there are corrections that need to be made with that, we can do that. In your packet, in your consent calendar, you actually approved the contract for closing out our underground storage tanks. So in our public works yard, that's the last storage tank that we have. So that's great. Um, in terms of we wanted to do some development impact fees and update our user fees, RGS has given us a proposal. Uh, we're going to be looking at that this year, doing development impact fees because we do have some actually developers who want to do some developments here. I'm going to pick out some highlights. Um, there are lots of engineering stuff. We have Suzanne here who's from our engineering department. And if you have any questions about this great engineering stuff that we have here, which I know a lot of you have questions often, um, we've got a water line on Maple Street. We've got blaster drainage improvement issues. Uh, one we we for the blaster drainage improvement project, we're waiting for parts. So we may have to wait till spring, but I believe that's already been bid. It's ready to go. Um, the blaster lane rehabilitation comes after the drainage project and um and we're actually looking at grants to do that, maybe Safe Routes to School. We've got um, we're upgrading the Maple Palm Station and Suzanne's going to be working on that with our city engineer. And uh that's an important task. We also have Main Street beautification. This is an ongoing project. Revite Ed, which is our committee, works really hard on that and bringing proposals to council. Um, we're going to our next big piece of that is our pavers. Um, we're going to be bringing that to council, some designs for that once we get our our as-built drawings and you'll be able to choose your pavers and pretty pretty things to put on the sidewalk and it will also be functional and make our 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 street look so much nicer. And we we have found funding for that, so that is not coming out of our general fund, which is good. Uh, part of that is we also applied for a big urban forestry grant of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for which would fund mainly fifty trees of mature size that would not only go on Main Street, but the any of the overflow would go on other streets and in our parks to sort of help reforest. We've had a lot of trees cut down in Willets and this would help um re-energize our urban forest. So and it also comes with an educational component so that we can teach students and the public about the benefits of of the urban forest. So we're we're looking forward to that in helping us put our trees on downtown. Um, enhancing cultural arts, uh, we did a staff report to to highlight or paint the town and we did a wonderful presentation. Uh, thanks to Well and and those folks from the community have come forward to help our our public art projects. Um, we had a uh some improved cultural arts this year. We want to do more of that. We had music in the park and and we're going to keep on doing music in the park because, you know, people want to give us money to do that and it's great. So far, we haven't had to dip into our general fund at all to do that. That's come from private donations, which I really appreciate. Um, and I want to make people feel loved. When they give us money for music in the park, you get credit for it. I will I will talk about you, so. Um, other things that, you know, we had three different lists, which was a little bit unusual. It was things that we were already doing, things that we really wanted to do that were important and things to be prioritized. And some of the prioritization things, you know, we haven't uh been able to do, some things we were able to do. So it's uh we wanted to develop a CIP process to prioritize CIP projects. What I did find out and that somebody asked me about this week, actually, uh, Councilmember Connie asked me about this, is our street prioritization. Because people want to know, well, how do we decide what streets to pave and what not? And how are we doing that? Well, there's actually a prioritization plan. And you guys looked at that maybe five years ago and it's about time that you do that again. So so our engineering department is going to bring that back to you so you can kind of look at the streets and need to get on and and prioritize those and explain what the criteria is. Um, another thing that I've talked to our new finance director about is creating a landscape and lighting district. Um, basically ways to fund our our downtown beautification. Just to finish up the last part, I I added a little I added another grid that you haven't seen before, and that is new projects because things come up and they need to be added to a list. Number one on that is Rails to Trails because that wasn't even on our list. So we have a new really big project and that's going to be Rails to Trails. We're going to be working really hard on that. Um, Penn Street, we had emergency water line replacement. That is now we're doing that right now, apparently, right? You guys? Spring, we're going to be doing that in spring.
Which street?
Uh, Penn Street.
Oh, Penn.
Uh, pavement preservation project has now part two, dealing with potholes and digouts and making the streets better. Um, that's going out to bid and then, of course, our urban forestry and getting getting trees. So that's I I didn't I didn't hit everything, but I tried to get some of the highlights.
So there were a couple of things that I there was one that went by early on and I want I should have mentioned it then. Um, and and I guess we're going to report. Sorry. Your dog is barking. So one of my comments was uh to sort of get updated on the progress on enforcing our vacant commercial building ordinance. And we might want to look at that again, especially once we kind of get the data together to perhaps strengthen it because um I feel and I'm sure a lot of other people feel it's a little um short of of really nudging people in the direction we want to nudge them to get some of those vacancies taken care of. So that's one item which we can hear about later. Um, in the to be prioritized was an energy plan?
Yes, and I'm glad you mentioned that because actually Suzanne's been working on that and that is coming forward in February.
Great. And um can will that sort of also address carbon, um, trying to be carbon neutral or or reduce our carbon footprint?
As of right now, no. I mean, our correctly, it's not directly, it's not what it should be. It could be, um, but right now it's. Money and finances with the emphasis on renewables.
Well, to the extent that we reduce our energy usage.
Yes, please, please come up and maybe address that.
Yeah, once you if you. Television audience can.
Okay. Suzanne Lutzis, Assistant Engineer. Hi.
Well, um, you sort of already answered part of it. In reducing our energy usage, part of which is a financial benefit.
Right.
As well, but to the extent that we're successful in conserving energy or going into alternative, uh, more sustainable, non-fossil fuel-based energy, we will be reducing our carbon footprint.
That's right.
But I I kind of would like us to at least have in there some um attention, I guess, to trying to make our city one of the one of those around the country that is paying attention to our carbon footprint.
Okay. Um, I think it would be fairly straightforward to just do it, convert it over. I don't think it I think that would be fine.
Yeah, I'm happy with the emphasis being on energy because that's.
If that's the will of the council, we can we can add that. And and seeing heads nod with these guys enough.
Is that how hard is that to do for you?
Well, I'll find out once I really look into it, but I think it should be fairly easy.
I guess that's my only concern is I I mean, initially, I would like to see us save money like no different than anybody at home with their PGME. And inadvertently, obviously, we're helping the environment. But I want to know how how much staff time will be taken up before I jump on the bandwagon.
I mean, I think I can do it fairly quickly. I think there's a lot of calculators that are available for that type of thing and.
And I believe other cities, even Ukiah, I think, is doing something. And I believe other cities, even Ukiah, I think is doing something like that, so...
I mean, one thing that could be a little tricky is without really knowing how much we'll reduce because we're not, or what kind of projects that we would really actually have without kind of going along with the plan first. It might be hard to actually get a number, but I could put something together, I think, in just a few hours or something.
I definitely will want to look at that when, when your project...
It's good to get feedback now about it, before it comes to you.
The final big item that I wanted to, I don't think it shows up here anywhere yet. We have the, setting the rates for the excise tax on our, on our scope here. But I think we really are due to look at our ordinance again because the outside world has changed a lot in the last year since we've been doing this. And I think, for example, the statewide legalization of adult use. We need to look at our ordinance and see if it doesn't need to be clarified or expanded or whatever, because we're, we're kind of behind the curve.
Absolutely, yeah. No, we've been talking about that. We will need to do that. And we, and that is definitely on our list of things to do, is to make sure that we're really current and that we really reflect what the state is doing and what other cities are doing. And so that should be on our list as a continuing staff work.
Please add that to the list. And then, you know, that will obviously come to the council relatively soon.
I think so.
I hope. Okay? Those were my main comments.
I have one question.
Sure.
And that was on the cannabis. We had previously hired a consulting company that's invested quite a bit of time in bringing us some advice. Are we using the same consulting?
We are not, actually. That company, we didn't spend that much money on it. They, they helped us do the initial rate setting and craft the actual ordinance. They crafted, because they've crafted a lot of ordinances. We are going to be using the same firm that does our sales tax now, and that's Muni Services. They actually look at our own sales tax data. They're a little bit closer to us and they have a lot of experience in actually the collection of the tax piece of it. Because right now, okay, so we've set the rates, now we want to actually get the money. And so it's a little bit of a different skill. And it's a company we already have on board. And so they've actually quoted us a really reasonable price to do that.
What is the price, Todd?
It's going to be about $5,000. Yeah. And it's coming out of cannabis funds. So it's not, yeah. It's, it's, and they're also going to show us some market data. And they're in Sacramento.
Larry, do you have any? No.
So if any other questions, I don't know if the public has any questions.
Regarding our goals, would the public like to... Okay, going, going.
I just want to also comment that I really appreciate that you are revisiting these and bringing up to the council, so not only the council, but the public knows that we have a lot of stuff on our agenda and we're prioritizing it. Really appreciate your keeping track.
I just would also like to say that, you know, you've been with the city a relatively short time. And every time I've gone into your office, as a private citizen and now as a council member, these goals are on giant sheets of paper in her office that she looks at every day. And I think it's impressive how much city staff has accomplished in a short time. And I hope the public realizes that these folks are working hard for us and getting good things done. So, thank you.
They are. It's a fabulous staff. I mean, it's a, it's a pleasure and a gift to, to work alongside this staff. I just want to say that.
Well, at this point, any other reports or definitely?
We have some department recommendations. I think Dusty wanted to say a word or two. Did you? Did anyone have any, any department heads want to speak to anything? I think you wanted to talk a little bit more about our Rails to Trails grant.
Yeah, I wanted to community developments, turning the topic.
Yeah, I was just checking to see if you had anything else.
Oh, I have nothing else, Steph.
Oh, okay. So, Department, Dusty. I got you, go forward.
It's not in that order.
Good evening, Mayor Gonzalez, council members. Welcome to the party, Councilmember Connie. And just like your husband promised, he's in the audience taking notes for you. I was going to call him out on that. I remember when he told you that when you were deciding whether to run. But he's here. So congratulations to the community of Willets. On January 30th or 31st, the California Transportation Commission's going to meet and they're going to award us $6.3 million to complete our Rails with Trails. This is a project that was identified long before I got here. And it's something that the community's been pushing for, for, for five years. We scored an 87. There was 558 applications from the state. We've got 65th. Okay, we're the only small jurisdiction up that high. And, you know, you clapped earlier. I'm going to let you know all the people you were clapping for. This is a true testament to what happens when a community gets behind a project. Sherwood Valley banned the Punggol Indians, Willets Unified School District, North Coast Railroad Authority, Westro Alonso de Willets, MCAG, Mendocino County HS, HHSA, Adam Scherf with the Willets Area Cyclists, Frank R. Howard Foundation, Senator Mike McGuire and his staff, Walk and Bike Mendocino, North Coast Opportunity, the Local Government Commission, Laura Cohen with the Rails with Trails Conservancy, Little Lake Fire District, Willets Police Department, and also the community. I see Linda's out here. Linda Matts, the owner of Katz Meow. We had a survey that we put together to show community support. Boy, if we got 100 responses, that was, that would probably do it. We were, we were over like 300, 400. And that's because a bunch of the community members took it on themselves to, to get the word out. And, and so that scored us more points than if we hadn't gotten the word out like that. So everyone should be taking some pride in, in that good news over the holiday. Also want to thank the city council for the support for the community development department. Jim Robbins is our community development specialist. He spent hundreds of hours putting this together. Okay? And if we hadn't gotten the resources to hire him, I don't think this would have happened like this. So the city council, you guys should be proud of the decisions you've been making as well. Having said that, holy smokes, now we've got a trail to build. So, you know, not sure when, when money gets released. Again, it gets voted on by the CTC at the end of the month. We're so high up there, you know, staff, their staff's really excited because they're not used to seeing applications like that from small jurisdictions, you know? We beat a lot of LA projects, San Francisco, et cetera, all the Sonoma County projects, et cetera. But, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a heavy load for staff to go ahead and complete these projects. So as soon as we got the money, I immediately apologized to the engineering department, to the public works department. You know, good news is, is that California Conservation Corps is, is coming here and they're buying a property and building campus right next to the trail. They've already signed on to, to help us build the trail and I'm sure ongoing maintenance as time goes on. We'll be relying heavily on Revite Ed to help us throughout the design process. And, and obviously, we have, you know, money to hire consultants and even money to, to hire managers to manage their consultants. But it's still going to be a, a long chore. But it's great to work on projects that'll, that'll be around long, long after we are. So we're, we're real happy to get these, these funds and to get going on the trail. So congratulations to everybody on that. Let's see here, just when you're talking about the goal-setting, update on the vacancy ordinance. This is, this was, you know, that was a tough nut to crack. It's, again, it was a balance of trying to respect private property rights, but at the same time, recognizing that there is a cost in the community by having these longstanding vacancies. What, the work that's left to do is, is what I reported last time. We, we think we know which, which buildings are subject to the ordinance. We've put together some draft forms. We want to double-check that list. We need to meet with some folks to make sure that they, they meet the definition of a vacant building. You know, we're looking at a $50 to $100 registration fee. Councilmember Strong, you mentioned that it's, that ordinance doesn't have a lot of teeth. But it, it, it's going in the right direction, I think, for where we're trying to get. So staff does have it as a priority to get that done. And the only reason it hasn't is we just keep running into these deadlines after deadline after deadline. But it's, we're, we're getting there. Let's see here, we, just some more good news. We received a use permit to, to construct 36 apartment units on the north end of town. So we're getting the project referral together for that. There's been discussions from some other folks that are looking at buying properties and doing some more residential development projects. We've continued to stay busy processing the last wave of cannabis applications. Everything's on the up and up with, with that program and we continue to receive interest. We're finalizing the, the solicitation of applications for dispensaries and we'll be putting that out shortly. And, um, let's see here, what else do I have? We completed the airport improvement capital program and sent that on to the FAA. That was due at the end of the year. We got that done. We submitted the grant request for, for the, the projects. This is, this is a list of projects that you guys have seen in the past and we're just continuing on, on with, with those priorities for the airport. We also, we're successful in submitting a grant request to do a enhanced safety crosswalk at, across Main Street at State Street. This would be a safer crosswalk, especially for a lot of the folks, for the high school students, as an alternative to the Sherwood intersection crossing. So this would be a lighted crosswalk, somewhat similar to what you see at, there at McDonald's on the other end of town. So just again, just moving forward with implementing the Main Street plan. And yeah, just happy to say that the department is staying very busy.
Before you go, go ahead.
Just a quick question. Are we going to have any more of those rails on Main Street placed along the strip there? You know where we've got the handrails? I noticed that there was one or two other spots people have asked about. I was curious if we were anticipating more than...
I'm not aware that Caltrans has any plans, free additional rails.
So you think they've installed all the ones that are going to?
Yeah, I believe so. We're, I believe we have a meeting that's trying to be set up for next week and we can ask for clarification on that. But I believe that was one spot where they were having a little bit of trouble meeting ADA compliance and that ended up being the solution. I think our folks might have different solutions that we may look to implement later, but I think they're pretty much wrapped up. And we have, there's a couple of signs that we've asked that they reinstall, but we'll have a meeting next week to, to follow up on any final matters. But I think at this point, they're, other than the Sherwood intersection projects, have they finished up Main Street?
Do you know when the remainder of the no parking, the wooden, standard board style signs will go away? Some of them not.
Yeah, they, they need to be replaced with actual red curb.
So we're just waiting for a red curb?
We anticipate Caltrans going to do that. We now understand that it's on us and I don't have an update.
We're waiting for weather. For the curbs, we do that in-house. We just need a fairly long stretch of dry weather to be able to paint the curbs.
I think from a safety perspective, we're all too anxious to see that.
I'm just asking questions that the public has asked.
Yeah, no, they're, they're right to ask that.
Actually, Bill Wilson brought that up when I sat next to him at the Christmas thing. Because I had asked him, I said, what's up with that? It's actually been several years, the agreement with Caltrans was that we would do the curb marking. We used to go back and forth with them, but I think in the end, somebody found something that it was on us. So Bill basically was lamenting that now he had more red curb to do.
Right. Yeah, we have to be cautious. We're doing all these great projects. It's, it's really putting a bigger workload on our public works department. So we're going to try to make some more money for the city so we can get some more help for those guys.
And I think if anybody else has more questions or things for Caltrans stuff, maybe you can send Dusty an email and that way he can remember to ask.
So one thing I wanted to make sure is if we're getting several fairly big residential projects coming forward, that kind of puts the pressure on getting that, the user, not the user fees, the impact fees in place, because you can't really do it retroactively, right?
Correct.
So, you know, I know that puts another deadline on you.
And I also understand that Councilmember Strong brought it up, that there's interest in revisiting the cannabis ordinance. So I guess there's council direction to go ahead and bring that back.
We've talked about that. We want to stay up to date and current.
Are we talking about being up to date with state law? Or are we talking about council giving direction to expand the ordinance to include something beyond state law?
Well, right now, state law has, for many operations, dissolved some of the distinctions between medical and adult use. And so, and ours is very, it, it doesn't, I mean, it distinguishes more than the state does. And so we probably want to bring that back to you to see if you want to do the same thing with our local ordinance. I don't know if that's an accurate way to put that.
At this point, I'm just seeking clarification.
Yeah. I, I think that we had, we've had people ask in the community, they wanted to know whether we were going to bring it back so we'd recognize those changes in the ordinance. And so I think it's, it's, I think it's a fair thing for us to bring back as staff to see what you wanted to do.
Yeah, well, I think clearly that's something we pretty much have to do, just to be consistent. But, but I think when we're looking at the ordinance again, we might, as a council, give direction to tinker with some other things, too, now that we have some experience with it on the ground, know what works and...
Yes, I mean, that's, I, I, as a city manager, I think that you need to look at it on an ongoing basis to make sure it's working and to make sure that it just is in compliance and is running smoothly and all those things, so...
At the time that we developed an ad hoc committee to explore a possible cannabis ordinance, at that time, a year and a half or more ago, the council was only willing to, to discuss adult use and not recreational use.
Medical.
Medical use, medical use and not recreational or adult use. And so our ordinance specifically is limited to medical use. And we have that right as a city, not to allow the other. It's true, the state does allow both types. And so it's really the will of the council. If the council wants to expand the ordinance to include both medical and adult recreational use, we can do that. We just need to know that that's the will of the council.
And, and right now, the distinction, I guess the law has changed so that in manufacturing and processing and that sort of thing, there is no longer that distinction in state law? So that make, that tweaks a little bit. That makes it...
And I don't think it would be a major undertaking to, to amend the ordinance to allow for, for both types of use if that's the council's wish.
Are you, are you asking for council direction or are you telling us that you're...
I'm bringing that back. I will be bringing that back, just so you can decide what you want to do. I mean, it's, it's always going to be your decision, but I think it's good that you know what the changes in the law are and bring that back to you.
Perhaps that ought to be an agendized item in the next month.
It will be. We're going to bring it back and I'm going to put it on the agenda to talk about that.
I, for one, before we actually bring it back to mull it over, I would like to see, and I know it's a little work for you guys, but to see what's, how we, how our ordinance stands now in relation to what the law has changed so that it may be one of those things that we might not have to climb the whole mountain. It may be that the mountain's already climbed us and that, that the change in the law, that most of it's already allowed by the state. And so, if nothing else, at the bare minimum, we should clean it up so that we are compliant with the state.
And it's not just compliant, it's just we were, we did it a while ago and, and the landscape is changing rapidly. And so I think it's worthwhile to bring it back. We'll probably do that in a couple of months. Just, you know, it's not going to be right away because we're doing plenty of things right now. And we do our, our applications and, and it's just something that you, we're going to keep it in front of you.
I would think before we have that conversation about expanding or changing, let our ordinance now stay. So we first need to implement the tax of the voter's approval, what we have.
Yes, exactly.
Get going on.
We need to work on that first. We need to work on that first.
Can I just make one comment? Regarding the vacancy ordinance, I know it's already sort of been addressed and I know you've got a lot of things on your plate. And with the Rails to Trails, $1,007,63,000.
You guys are kind of neat, it's okay.
I, I just would really encourage strongly to finish up on those registration forms. There was so much work put into getting that, that ordinance passed. We came up, you know, as the public, as the Revite Ed committee, three times here to try and get the pass council to approve. I'd love to just see it followed through before it disappears.
Yeah, I, I feel that, thank you. It's, we got about 20 or 30 hours left to finish it up. Part of it's the registration form, part of it's informational, and then part of it's just identifying those vacant buildings. just identifying those vacant buildings. And, and part of it is actually after the talk to owners, understanding how many units they have, if there's three units and two are filled, then they're not subject to it. So, but like I said, there's about 20 or 30 hours of staff time to get there and I think it's just a matter of getting away from deadlines.
Right, right. But once this, this trail thing is through, you'll.
But I recognize the tremendous concern there is for that issue in the community and how much work was putting, just trying to come up with some balance that the council could support, so. I don't intend to waste that, that effort.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dusty.
Jerry, I just have a clarifying question so that we're clear for the public, because I asked a question about whether or not the council was giving direction or city manager was making the decision. So can I just get some clarification? Is it the will of the council that we bring back for discussion to add recreational? Cause we should be clear so that the public knows what future conversations.
I kind of got the impression that we're gonna bring it back. I'd like to see how the changes reflect what we have before we look at, and obviously that's a separate discussion itself for future date. I think it's implement the tax first, or the excise tax first is the first order business, but then the other one would be. I just wanna see how it reflects with what the law now says, cause it went from medical and recreational, or medical, then recreational got shoved in, and then we kind of proceeded forward with just medical on ours. And some of those lines have become blurred on the state level when it comes to certain aspects of the business. I kind of, before I jump into the whole recreational thing, I kind of wanna see how those lines are blurred already. If nothing else, we may just clean up what we have, or if it's the will of the council, I would see that we'd come back and, and go that next step, if that's what the will of the council is.
And I, I think that's exactly sort of what I had in mind, is just coming back with the topic, not recommending anything, is just bringing it up for you to show you what's been done.
That, that's very clear.
And then you give us direction, whether you want to go in, what direction you want to go into. I'm not gonna recommend necessarily anything, it's just, okay, see, these are some of the changes, would you like me to come back with some changes? And have it on the agenda so we can actually give direction?
Yes, exactly.
I just, I don't want to be surprised to find out three days or four days before an agenda comes out that we're gonna be talking about a huge topic days before where this could very much change our community. So I'm trying to get a sense of where you're, where you're.
I totally understand.
And that's one of the reasons I think I wanted to see some of that before we actually have a discussion with some, cause I'll tell you, when it comes to certain aspects of manufacturing and distribution, those lines were clear cut before and then they were blurred. So that may just be something that we have to look at in terms of our ordinance, that we just clean that up so that it reflects what the state law. Now whether we want to make the next jump and say we've, we've opened it all up to recreational and medical, then I think that's one we, that's a separate discussion, I think.
As long as it's a separate discussion and the will of the council is to have that separate discussion, I'm comfortable with it.
Administration, Karen, do you have anything?
Good evening, Karen Stevenson, your HR department. Good evening, Mayor. I just wanted to let you know that we brought on board a police officer who has 13 years' experience. He came on board on December 31st, his name is Raymond Derrick Hendry, he goes by Derrick. We're very excited to have him and unfortunately, next week, we won't be able to swear him in, so we're hoping that we'll be able to do it the following week. And we will be sending out an email inviting everybody to attend his swearing in. Thank you.
And, Billy Inspector, want to say anything, or are you good?
Just about the flood maps. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I've been in contact with FEMA every, every three weeks or so, talked to the gentleman there. January 25th, we're supposed to get hard copies. I'd like to recommend that when we do get those hard copies, that we kind of make those available to the public and get their thoughts and views before we, you know, put it on an agenda for, for voting. And that's basically it. And also, we've got a lot of projects coming, so December, January will probably also be a low months, but things are coming and I suspect that we'll be setting more records in the months to come with all the activity that's anticipated.
Is there any way when we have those flood maps available, that we maybe schedule a day in the evening that the public could come in and look at them, or is that more like they'll just come see you if they want to look at them?
Well, I, and, excuse me, talking with John, his recommendation that maybe we open it up in the community center and have, have them available for viewing. So as, as we actually get those hard copies, I guess we'll figure out something that we can do to make sure that people that want to see them can before.
Will they come as giant maps or small?
I would suspect something about the size behind Jim there, that's the size that I have currently. And right now, I'm operating off the 2011 maps with a few projects that, that have come in needing flood elevations and information.
And we can have an evening community meeting and I think that'd be a good opportunity.
I just figured that people, honestly, I think a lot of people don't think about flooding until it's this time of year.
Until they get their, until they get their insurance bill.
Yeah.
If we are gonna do an evening event, I know everybody loves to hate social media, but I would strongly recommend posting it on the Willets fan page, a lot of people pay attention to that. We can do that.
And hopefully they won't be further delayed. It's supposed to be December, so.
So let's not put it on social media before we. Suprema, do you have something?
Is the, I know before when we had this discussion with John Sherman, there was a lot of conversation around negotiation. Is the negotiation of elevations and all that sort of stuff, is this, is that time now passed and what we have is the final product?
No, it'll still, it'll still be up for debate, once we get these hard copies. But I do have digital versions that seem to mirror what the 2011 maps are more closely than some of the original proposals, what seem to be kind of way out of proportion. So these that anticipate coming should resemble more what, what the 2011 maps have projected. I'm a newcomer here, so I'm trying to get sped up on, on all of our flood zone areas, so I'm not quite the expert that, that John was on these maps. But looking at the 2011s and what's anticipated coming, they're, they're similar.
Okay, I just know that there was quite a bit of controversy over who was in the flood plane and how that was gonna affect your insurance, yeah.
Yeah, I think John told me there were areas that captured 30% more.
Yeah.
And so it was probably a little ridiculous.
We're gonna be, I'm gonna be interested to see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, do you have anything to do?
Me too, I have a couple things.
Go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank George Peterson for filling in for me last month while I attended the League of California City Conference. I'd also like to welcome Councilmember Connie to our city family, we look forward to working with you. I'd also like to thank Mayor Strong for being our mayor last year. Thank you. Form 700s, you may have received this today, some of them went electronically, some of them didn't. Leaks, or that FPPC sent them out this morning, so.
I received mine.
Look for those.
I received.
Larry, I'm not sure yet, you have to, another one. I'm looking into that, hopefully you won't have to. And last but not least, I'd like to wish Councilmember Stransky a happy birthday.
Thank you.
That's next week.
Not yet.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, and public safety. Chris, Kada, Chief?
Mr.
All right. Well, city council, committee, boards and agency reports, does anybody have anything?
EDFC, the Economic Development and Financing Corporation, will be meeting tomorrow at two in Ukiah, and I'll have a report on it for next time.
Mine hasn't met during the holiday.
Mine were canceled or haven't yet, so. Larry, do you have anything?
No.
All right. We are now at item 12, Mayor's Appointments to Boards, Commissions and Committees. I think you've all got what I put out there with the exception of the JPA feasibility study for WWTP, and it was my hope that I could combine that with the Water and Wastewater Systems Committee, but obviously I need to bring it to you guys, is that correct?
Yes.
That's the proper format? So, go ahead.
I would like, if possible, not to be the alternate for MTA, I feel like I have my plate pretty full without that.
I haven't missed any meetings, if that's comforting.
That was kind of, thank you. Kada, would you like to be an alternate on that, or?
I don't know that I have the time at the moment.
I wouldn't worry, Madge.
And I haven't missed an EDFC, so. All right.
Two years I haven't missed any meetings, I think you're safe.
Kathy had conversations about.
Okay, yes, no problem.
Don't miss things, so, all right. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I was pleased with the list, thank you.
I wanted to kind of draw on everybody's strengths or what I've received, interests. I know some of you submitted your requests and, cause Kada, we tried to bring you on slowly before we smothered you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I, knowing from what Larry said, when you're running a business, it's hard to get away to somebody's, so I tried to.
Daytime.
Understanding that respect. I'm retired, but the rest of you aren't, so.
I appreciate it, and I also appreciate that I got committees that I was interested in, so I didn't expect you as the, as the low woman on the totem pole.
Well, and I, and I'll tell you, that's kind of what I, I think my thinking was like, you know, Larry's shown a big interest in what Caltrans is doing, you've been at a lot of meetings before you leave out of council, so I thought that would be a good fit there. And I, I thought you and Suprema would be a good addition to Rebyd Ed, and I figure you might see me there and I'll be the, Larry would usually be the fly on the wall.
Right.
So I won't be speaking, but I'll be there, so.
I just want to comment, I've made this comment before, but especially now that we have a chunk of money coming in with a big grant and a lot of Main Street work clearly on our plate and the urban forests, all of which would be benefit from going through the Rebyd Ed Committee, I would really like to see that committee meet more often than once a quarter. I think there's a lot, you know, that leads their home, leads their input, and I leave that to other people to decide, but I feel very strongly that once a quarter just isn't gonna get as much.
I have felt that way as a, as a community member, chomping at the bit to get things happening, but after multiple discussions with Dusty and knowing all the things that are on his plate, I understand his reticence to have more meetings. So I think that if we can concentrate on having our meetings be supercharged, so we can have few that are great instead of a lot of little ones where we just talk about the same things over and over again, might help Dusty and, and help us actually get a better result.
You know, and I know that we're doing the sign committee.
I thought the sign committee was very.
So I, I think as we, that may be a subject for Rebyd Ed down the road, to whether or not you want to branch off to a subcommittee to deal with that or other issues that come up, especially as we start looking at. I gotta tell you that what I try to tell the public is, Main Street, in a perfect world, if we had a pot of money to start doing everything everybody wants, it'd be easy, but it's not because we have to wait till it's ours and then after that, we're gonna wait and see what kind of money we can leverage and then go from there. But the ideas are out there, it's just a question of, I guess that's the frustration I find with meeting, sometimes we had a lot of ideas but no money to spend. It's no different than me going to, I don't know, JCPenney's and having a lot of ideas of what I want to buy, but I haven't.
Window shopping.
Yeah. So, all right, I'll leave it up to you folks.
We do have some money coming in now for projects, so.
Yeah, I think that'll be the, hopefully the group will, will see what you can do and if you need to meet more, then work that out. I can do that in your capable hands. So to combine the other, the JPA, do we need a separate motion?
I think you should probably do that. What do you think, Kathy?
Yeah, I think we should.
So I did, Larry would be there, we do the JPA feasibility study and combine that with the wastewater.
The same people.
The same people, cause it's along the same subject, so. So can I have a motion to that effect first?
I still move.
A second.
I'll second.
Do I have any further discussion?
Is this a motion just on?
Just on that, just on the JPA, yeah, to combine that into the.
Oh, to combine it with it, with the wastewater.
Combine that with the wastewater.
What, I'm sorry, I'm not tracking, what do we?
I think if you explain what the JPA is, it would be helpful.
The JPA feasibility study for wastewater treatment, that has to do with, was that the part of our, correct me, Jim, that would be relating to Brooktrails lawsuit, is that correct?
Yes.
And so it's needed to meet and. I don't think we actually meant, you guys have been doing the accounting and thinking back and forth, right?
Both agencies have agreed on San Rosa CPA firm to, to be engaged jointly by both agencies to conduct an audit, and that's where.
So it was kind of on the books all last year and maybe the year before, but there was no action because we were going back and forth regarding process. We seem to be moving forward on that and at this point, it, those seconds kind of.
Yeah, basically with, with our lawsuit with Brooktrails settled during the course of a jury trial, one term of the settlement was that Brooktrails would pay to the city, I think it's $21,000 a month, a flat fee, for the fee for the city to process the waste that came from Brooktrails. And that would happen for a three-year period, and at the end of the three years, the two agencies would hire an independent auditor who would look at the books and determine whether that was an appropriate fee or whether it was low or high, and assist the parties in agreeing upon a new flat rate going forward. So that's where we're at. We've engaged the San Rosa firm, they're looking at our data, and hopefully in the next month or two, they're gonna help us with the recommended new flat fee.
So that's the, so the intent would be that that may pick up some speed once we're done with that audit and then the idea being that the wastewater committee, it's kind of along the same lines, why have a separate committee that could meet.
So, but this motion is just.
Just to combine that one.
Yeah, okay.
To combine the JPA feasibility.
And then we.
So, so do I have anybody from the public that would like to comment on this? Okay, bringing it back up here, I have a motion, a second, and again, no further discussion. All those in favor of combining the JPA feasibility study, WWTP ad hoc committee with the wastewater systems committee?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Now on the Mayor's Appointments, do I have a?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Motion second, anybody from the public or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Jerry, maybe just for the public's purpose, understanding that each of us serve on these committees and that this is a duty that is in connection with, maybe explaining for public.
So for the public, and I know probably gonna be more for the television public because most everybody that attends these meetings knows that in addition to coming up and meeting up here twice a month, we also have other duties amongst those are to sit on, like the finance committee, the wastewater committee we just talked, the Rebyd Ed Committee, the League of Cities Committee, Regional Board, the MCOT Board where we actually are representative on that regional board. The EDFC, Madge has been on that, and Menaceable Solid Waste Management, Madge has been on that one, and MTA, Suprema's been on that. And we are representatives on those regional boards. Us, Ukiah, Fort Bragg, the county, and public members serve on these different boards that run things out there beyond our normal city limits that we do. So those are additional duties. So when people ask you, "What do you do as a city council member?", well, we meet twice a month, but I also, whatever other extra committees or, or extra meetings we may have here, we also go down to the county. So it's not uncommon to see any of us down at the county, Point Arena, I think, what's the, you've gone to Point Arena for MTA.
All over the county.
Yeah, so you'll see us there and people go, "What do you do?" Yeah, so you'll see us there, and people go, what are you doing here? And you're like, I'm on the MTA, I'm on Lafco, I'm on this, and, and so, because I've had, again, I've got questions from the public sometimes, of what do you do? Well, this is what I do. And so we are one vote usually on those boards, and that's how they function, so...
So those boards, those county boards like Lafco, they're organized in such a manner that their board consists of representatives from each of the cities, and so if we didn't have a representative that served on the Lafco, then the representatives from Fort Bragg or elsewhere would be making the decisions of Lafco without the interest perhaps of the city of Willets.
Thank you, Jim. And MTA, you know, when, when they look at things like raising rates or, or garbage issues, these regional boards are what we have to say. So sometimes when you hear us talk, or you have some input, because I've had some people say, why, I don't like X or something regarding your case, I think Suprema's competent, people from the public have asked her questions, and she brings that to those boards or those questions. Sometimes it's more of an education thing, sometimes you actually can say, hey, I have a citizen in Willets brought, why aren't, why isn't there another bus stop or something, or why did a bus stop disappear, or what's the deal with garbage collection in Willets, or what's up that way? So, again, it's one of those other duties as assigned, and as mayor, I get to assign them, so... And we voted, right? Yes, we lost, right? Thank you. All right, and resolution, appointing representatives to represent and vote on behalf of the city of, the city at the League of California Cities, Rapid Empire Division Business Meetings and Division Legislative Committee Meetings. I am currently the representative on the League of Cities, and Larry is the alternate. So I need a motion. I will move a approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, anybody from the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. At this point, it's Good and Welfare. Do you have any Good and Welfare?
Yeah, I just want to mention that as of today, we've got the printed version of the WELL newsletter for January and February, and if you're a member, you may have already gotten it by email. If you're not a member but would like to look at this, I have a few extra copies, and you might want to consider being a member, because WELL is a really nice nonprofit that sort of supplements and works as a, as a bunch of volunteers on issues that are of note to the city and to the whole zip code, if anybody else would like one.
Do I have any other Good and Welfare?
Yeah, just that Visit Willets Tourism Board meets next week at 4:00 here in the council chambers, will be having discussion and possibly selecting projects that we'll be taking on for 2019. We're looking to put together a new signature event, and we've been brainstorming what that might be, and one of the recent conversations was, if you are from out of the area, what might you like to do in a rural area, and what does Willets have to offer? So we're looking for people who may have ideas. We had discussion about if we had, for example, several different ranches that have horses available, that maybe we could select a, a group of them, and people would be able to come from the city, stay in lodging here, go horseback riding over the course of a weekend. But it wouldn't be just one single event, because we know that families have multiple interests, so we could possibly organize a, a weekend where you, you know, you could choose whether or not you want to go horseback riding, or maybe you wanted a, a nature, a guided nature walk, or other things like that. So any community members that want to bring some input on what new signature that we'd like to bring to Willets, please come to the, to the meeting. And we're working closely with the Willets Chamber of Commerce, which is exciting, because I think it's important for all entities to work hand in hand, so that we can accomplish more, and I think that's good for our community. Oh, and one more thing? The prayer breakfast, we can't forget the prayer breakfast that the Adventist Health puts on. It's on Thursday, January 31st, from 8:00 to 10:00, and some people don't know how to participate, and you just need to contact the Adventist Health. I was looking to see if there's a phone number.
Well, this is, they usually invite city officials and then some folks, and then they'll do an event in the evening. That's usually the one that's open to the public.
Yes, I know you can get in on the morning one, too, if you call, you can ask to be placed on the list, otherwise, mark your calendar for that evening, because the evening is just as special.
It sounds like they got a pretty good speaker in line.
Yes, I, I tend to go to the morning and then the evening, because it's just so phenomenal.
Okay, okay. Yes? All right. And we have no closed sessions, so at this point, we accept a motion to adjourn.
I still move.
Second.
Thank you very much, everybody.